I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have the secretary perform a roll call attendance, please?
Here.
Okay. All the board members have received the minutes from the March 6 meeting. If there's no comments or concerns, entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
So moved, second.
Okay. Motion's made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. First item on the agenda this evening is an adjourned public hearing for the Tarot subdivision. Entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved, second.
All right. Motion's made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. We received late today an email from the engineer that they're not going to be able to attend this meeting, they're not ready to move on, and they've asked to be adjourned to a future date. During a workshop, we discussed the May 15 meeting would probably give them enough time to get their items in order, so entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing to May 15.
So moved, second.
Okay. Motion's made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next item on the agenda is a discussion site plan and special use permit for Myers Corner Solar Farm.
My name is Jason Dickey. I am a consultant with TRC Companies. We're an engineering and environmental consulting firm representing the old Myers solar project. Sam Bailey with Lightstar Renewables was here last week. I didn't do any talking or sorry at the last meeting two weeks ago. Sam Bailey with Lightstar. But his associate Kyle is here tonight also with Lightstar. At the last meeting, we had some discussion and ultimately request to do some tree clearing ahead of site plan approval, special use permit, with the reason being that right now we're in a seasonal tree clearing allowance for bats. To, you know, right now bats are in caves and they're not flying around trees, so it's a very low risk of there being any impact. After the hard cutoff, and you got to put a cutoff on it, is April 1, and then after that, it's a tree clearing exclusion that goes all the way basically to the end of October, and that's not a favorable timeline for the project, so that's the nature of our request. So, you know, we, you scheduled a field trip to the site last Sunday, and we had one of my junior staff go out there and flag the areas to be cleared ahead of that meeting. We provided you a memo, you know, at the last meeting. It seemed to be receptive to an authorization for tree clearing, but you said, you know, I can't, I'm not going to rub and stamp this, I need some details, I need to know what's out there, how many, what species, so we gave a memo. Here tonight, simply as follow-up, to see what questions you have. Still in pursuit, that same request. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. I think we did have the one open question was, I think we started, it was supposed to be a total of 3.5 acres to be cleared, but part of that's within a wetland buffer, which you can't cut down at this point until after a permit's been issued for, you know, working within the buffer area.
Correct.
Which is going to take some time. So is it actually, what's the actual amount that we're looking to clear at this time?
So what I've got on the poster here, this is just the clearing and grading plan that was submitted with our application, it's just blown up, but the tree clearing areas are depicted with a crosshatch here. That equals 3.5 acres. A portion of it is within the wetland buffer area. That's .52 acres. So we can just say roughly three acres of tree clearing, when we avoid the wetland buffer.
Okay. So we're talking about, all right, so we're talking about point, so we're talking about three acres then?
Yeah.
Okay. So I think that satisfies the question. Okay. All right. Any of the board members have any questions for the applicant?
Nope.
No.
No.
Okay. All right. The staff have any questions, I guess?
No. You ask my one clarifying question.
One thing that wasn't addressed in their memo was, and it was discussed at the last meeting, was the whole need for some kind of bond, restoration bond, and I know an amount was thrown out, but there was never, you know, any formal, like here's what we propose, so.
Yeah. So I know that we didn't, and you didn't prepare a number for this tonight?
I did not.
No, because we didn't, but, so that raises the, that goes back to the last meeting. I remember, I know what you're talking about, that they proposed to put up $30,000.
Right.
Is that what's still on the table here at this point?
Still on the table, yeah. And that's just based on what we've done with a similar project in a nearby municipality, so.
Okay. All right. So if that's their offer, I guess?
I think that's more.
And you think that's acceptable?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
And I guess the question, and I think last time you mentioned it, would be a bank check, or is that how it was, it was a cash, or was it an actual surety bond?
I'll have to check on that if you have a security bond, but I'll, we'll check.
Okay. Either way. So what we'll do is, if the board, you know, grants this resolution, we have a standard performance agreement, which we will send to you guys. And I would ask that Lightstar and the owner sign both, sign the performance agreement and secured by the surety bond. If you could get a copy of the surety bond to me by Thursday, we can have it on next Monday's town board agenda for their acceptance.
When that gets emailed, could you include me on that email?
Sure.
That way I can help distribute. Happy to report, the reason Sam's not here tonight is that his wife is expecting, this is her due date, their first child, so.
Okay.
So he might be offline for a short period, and I don't want that to get lost.
You send it to me? Okay.
Okay. All right. So with all that said, if nobody has any objections to it, entertain a motion to approve the removal of the trees, with the exception of anything that's in the wetland buffer area. And with the, and the applicant will put up a $30,000, either cash or bond, to, you know, performance bond, so.
So moved, second.
All right. Motion's made, seconded? All right. So, motion's made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So motion carries. Okay. So you're on your way. Okay. Next item on the agenda this evening is a discussion regarding 33 Middle Bush Road for site plan and lot line consolidation.
Hey. Applicant is on his way, should be here any minute. This project has, it's been a while since this project was before the board last year. In fact, I was involved with it a couple of years ago, so trying to get back in the groove here. The project received a conditional approval several years ago. This is for the ugly block building that's a couple hundred yards down the street, 33 Middle Bush. The original plan was to renovate the existing building, improve the parking area a bit, but time has passed and the building has deteriorated so much that they're actually going to raise the building and build it in the same exact footprint. But besides that, I have, I can give you a quick, quick update on the project from the last time it was before you, last year. We did have comments from John, and also comments from county planning. I'll just kind of go through the highlights of, because going through each one will be a little boring. So there was a question to describe the use of the building. It's a thing called a contractor storage building, so there's no vehicle maintenance or storage proposed, no storage of chemicals, hazardous chemicals. So that's the use of the building. The wetlands, the wetlands have been flagged, they're not indicated on this submission, because we're still waiting for them to be surveyed, so it'll be added to the next submission with the, with the buffer. And with that, we will need a wetland disturbance permit for some of the work within, I think the wetland and the buffer probably. Septic system will be reconstructed in the location of the existing lot, which is right here in the front corner of the property, is essentially the only spot it can, it can go. Deep tests and perk tests were performed with the health department, I think last year, or maybe even two years ago, so that's all set, so once we have the wetlands surveyed and on the plans, we can submit to the health department for their review. There's also a new water supply well that's proposed, it's served by a well, but that well is going to be in the middle of the parking lot, so we have to abandon that well. I reached out to Dutchess County DPW just to confirm that they're okay with the proposed approvals to the site, and they are, of course, we'll need a highway work permit from them, but they don't have any real changes to the layout of the curbing and the curb cut there. No freestanding signs are proposed, just, I think there's four tenant spaces within this building. There'll be small tenant directional signs right, I think over the doors on the signs, so no, no freestanding signs. Disturbance will be less than an acre, but we did submit a storm report that we had submitted three years ago. Everything's essentially the same. I think we did eliminate the retention area. So now to the county planning's comments. They suggested that we propose a sidewalk along frontage because it's in keeping, if it was with the town's master plan, or if it was the county's master plan, to have sidewalks along Middle Bush. Doesn't seem really appropriate, because there's no connecting sidewalks, but they suggested, if the town doesn't want that sidewalk at this point, that be reserve and easement for potential future construction, which we're fine with. So that's, you know, some input that we would ask from the board, if you would want us to build a sidewalk in front now, or not.
Yeah. We had some discussion earlier regarding the sidewalk. I mean, it's probably, I mean, it seems that they've just redid the road not that long ago, so county's not going to come through and do anything, and I don't know if there's any plans, you know, for the, you know, for the county to put anything in at this point.
Doesn't seem it.
So it's kind of a.
To preserve the easement.
At the very least, does it?
Put easement. Yeah. We'll show that.
Do an easement, and that way if they decide to build it out in the future, then it's just, you know, it's that much easier for them to get that section taken care of.
Yeah. Yep. That makes sense. We've also submitted a lighting plan with materials. And the parking, proposing a little bit more parking than required by code. I think the paved spaces, there's, I think, three additional spaces, and then the rest is really sort of a maneuvering area for trucks, but we do show some parking spaces there as well in the gravel area. So I think that was kind of our solution for not creating too much in the way of impervious surfaces, and just limiting the pavement in the light gray that you see in front of the building, and then gravel to the right side there, to the east. That's all I really have as far as the bigger comments. I'm here for questions and anything else you might have.
I would mention one thing just before it flies out of my head.
Go ahead.
I think Barbara just mentioned this, that the, we were reading the conditions of the use variance earlier, and one of them is that the space cannot be divided into more than three tenant spaces, and he just mentioned that they're looking to divide it into four. So they'll need to change that plan, or we'll need to look at amending or replying for that use variance.
Right. They'll have to go back, well, they might be going back to the board anyway.
Depending.
With the.
Because you'll also, if you're taking the building down, you've got a few area variances, or existing non-conforming, but if you're building in the same footprint, but you're tearing the building down, you'll need to get those area variances.
Oh, is that right?
It's definitely a tear down, right? Right, John, or?
Three, four years ago, the building was.
Come on up, you have to step up to the, step up to the microphone, please.
So I was saying, three, four years ago, maybe the structure was usable again, but I'm thinking it's going to be more trouble than it's worth to try to save what's there.
Can you also identify yourself for the record?
John, the owner.
Okay. All right. So the building, so it's now no longer repairable, it's something that has to come down?
I would say so.
Okay.
I mean, we're not changing the size or location, it'd be the same, the same exact footprint.
Right. But still, you're taking a building down, and by taking it down, you're rebuilding it in the same place. You still have some setback issues that need to be addressed, so that would have to be, you'd have to go to the zoning board of appeals to get a variance for the setbacks.
Which we could do, yes, I guess. What about saving a percentage of it? Is there, can we save a percentage of it without doing, taking that step?
That's.
Lawyer.
I'll leave, I'll leave, that's a, yeah, I mean, there's ways of doing it, yes, if you leave a portion of it up.
Renovate around it.
Yeah. I mean, ultimately, it's, I don't know if a code addresses that issue specifically, you know.
Talking about rebuilding and not conforming if you leave up a wall.
Right.
That doesn't speak to the variances.
Yeah, I mean.
It just allows you to rebuild it.
I mean, the, you know, the, and I guess the other question is, in certain zoning, the problem is this is a county road, so what's the setback, 75 feet? So there's certain provisions in the code where if the.
Setback of the zone.
The set, well, but also if the setback of the buildings is consistent with other buildings along the lot, or along the frontage.
But nothing's up close there.
Right.
But there is.
Well, actually.
What about the provision on a state or county highway for pre-existing buildings? It might just be for residential, but they get to build to the zone, which might be our 20 there.
Yeah, I mean, we can look at that.
But that might just be residential.
I know. Wow. Yeah, we can, we can look at that issue, so.
The other thing that we had mentioned in the pre-meeting for consideration is that with the previous resolution, seeker had been concluded, but that was under the proposal that this was an existing building to be renovated and reused, and with the deconstruction, and with some of the other changes to the project regarding stormwater, we'll probably need a fresh seeker process, starting with an EAF Part 1, and then we will circulate for lead agency.
So as far as the read on the interpretation of how much building can stay up and avoid a variance and all that, how should I go about finding that answer out?
You can submit a letter to the zoning administrator requesting an interpretation.
Okay.
You know, so, I mean, I would think that if the, I mean, I would think if you would do that, you'd have to leave up all of the building that was in the setback, so it wouldn't just be a wall, right?
Yeah. And there's, it's the, it's the front lot line, but it's also the back lot line, right?
I was just trying to look that up.
No, I don't think it is the.
The side, I would think.
What's that?
It is the side.
The side, they're going to.
No, they're, well, they're talking about, they're eliminating the lot line.
That gets rid of the one.
Yeah, bring the.
Rear as well.
It is in the rear, yeah. If you, it's not shown on the monitor for the crowd, but if you bring it down, you'll see the, the building envelope conflicts with the proposed.
You can see right here, the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Front yard, 75 feet, county road, 29, existing. Year, 50 required, the show, 39.
Yep.
Existing. Okay, well, we'll get that letter to the zoning administrator.
Yeah, but that's, that's not a use.
And you're also anticipating needing a wetland disturbance permit for work in the buffer?
Correct.
Have you, I mean, if we go through seeker, we will need to coordinate with Army Corps, but I think it's an Army Corps one. Just, you know, as you operate with them, keep track of all your correspondence and forward it to the town.
Okay.
Mentioned, like, not going to.
Yeah. So there's still going to be.
Yeah. My other, my other thought is that, one, with additional parking spaces beyond what is required by code, you'll need a waiver from the planning board, and also, there's some, in my comment memo, we elaborate on it, but the turning template in the gravelled area depends upon that missing parking space, and there's no way to stripe those parking spaces, because it's in a gravel lot.
Correct.
And if all of the other ones are parking spaces, it's a very natural place to assume for there to be a parking space, so our traffic engineers are concerned about a conflict with that turning radius, and a solution, I don't know, if that area is just for turning radius, and you're not anticipating needing it for parking, then you could eliminate that row of parking and just using it, use it for truck maneuverability.
Right. I thought we submitted an auto turn plan that showed that it made the circulation through the site without conflicting with any parking spaces.
Yes, but that missing parking space from the central row, you know, you have a row of seven facing a row of six.
Yeah, it doesn't really.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
It requires that row of six to not have a seven, and it would be a logical place to assume there would be a parking space, because they're not striped. That's what our concern is, not with the proposed space, but with the assumption of that space.
Okay.
What about that parking in front of the dumpster? That's going to be.
An issue?
For access.
I just, I just saw that, I was just thinking about that, too.
Yep.
You know, it's a little unusual, parking in front of the dumpster, and how's the, how are they going to be able to get to the dumpster when they come to pick it up?
Yeah, that's, that was carried from the previous plan. I would think that the owner knows what big garage that is, is parked there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's that?
Yeah. So I mean, the other, yeah, so I mean, obviously, there's a couple of little items, I mean, that.
Sure.
One, I guess, is the use variance, because I guess it's, they stayed with three tenant spaces, correct? So.
Yeah, that's an easy fix.
Yeah.
Applicant says he can do that.
All right. And then, and then I think also in there was, there'd be no parking outside, right, after hours or something?
That's.
Or no trucks, no.
Commercial vehicles.
That's in the code, yeah, that's, those are notes that we need to add to the plan. One of them is.
It was a.
Section.
Yeah, because there was a lot of discussion going back with, on the previous plan regarding parking of trucks in the lot, you know, it was contractors, you know, parking vehicles there overnight, they were told they were going to be put in, you know, they'd be in the building, or, you know, it'd be a minimal, I guess, a minimal number.
I also flagged section 24096G. 24096G, and that talks about non-residential uses in a residential zone. All off-street parking and loading spaces shall be provided with, no, we need to go down to G, sorry. Commercial vehicles, not more than one light duty commercial, commercially registered vehicle, and one trailer may be parked or stored outdoors on any residentially used or residentially zoned lot at any time. For the purpose of this section, a light duty commercial registered vehicle shall exclude vehicles which exceed 9,500 pounds. I mean, it goes on, there's, there's details there, but it's.
Okay.
It is essentially, it's related, absolutely, to the storage of contractor trucks there. They wouldn't be able to be stored in that parking lot, and we would need.
Because it's, right, because it's a residential piece of property and not a commercial property.
So we need notes on the plan to that effect.
Okay.
Okay.
Also, take a look at my comment memo. There's a couple of other housekeeping items that.
I didn't get that.
It's on the website at this point. We can make sure that you have it. It's minor things.
It's a light trespass?
Yeah. I did want to bring that up. You'll either need to get a, request a waiver from the planning board, or make slight modifications to the lighting plan. It shows there, I mean, it's, it's very, very minor instances of light trespass. I would think that with small changes to the plan, that you could eliminate it completely. And if you, if you really, really can't, you can, you can ask for a waiver, but.
No, it was probably along the frontage, right? Along.
It's along the frontage, and it's along the back. It's, it's the two sides of the building that have the setback variance, or the existing non-conforming, and would need an area variance. And so if you get area variances for those walls, they even, they may even make that a condition.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. John, do you have anything? Trump's out.
He touched on, you know, the, the major points from our letter, but, you know, we asked for some additional information regarding the drainage design, the percolation rates that were used seem to conflict with the ones you got in the field, so just, you know, some clarifications and.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's on the website, your letters?
They, they are both on the website, but we can also make sure that you.
Okay.
Get them independently.
What else? Anything else?
You guys have any other concerns?
No.
I think we got it all.
Okay. Plans, crazy.
Just to confirm that the two lots are going to be merged, is that still the plan?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, it's, it's a minor thing, but while we're talking about it, you talked about moving the dumpster enclosure that might be a good idea. We will need a detail of that dumpster enclosure on the plans. And, yeah, yeah, Part 1, we talked about that earlier, but the earlier we start that process, the better, because it has time windows built into it.
So the seeker is getting restarted regardless of the variance outcome?
I think, I think so. The original resolution, which had the seeker determination in it, says that the existing building will be renovated for this purpose, and, and now that is not the plan. The plan is to take the building down and reconstruct it, so I think we will need to do seeker again.
Yeah. Okay. The architecture is going to stay the same as what was originally proposed? Okay, so there's no changes there?
Can we get those elevations in the next submission?
Sure. Sure.
Yeah.
Do you at some point with somebody else want to change some of the materials that were originally proposed? This would be the time to show us those changes.
Okay.
Are you anticipating tree clearing as part of this, or is it all sort of already disturbed?
Yeah, there'll be some tree clearing in the northeast corner, I believe. It's pretty, it's, it's not real dense. And there may be some tree clearing on the west side of the building for the storm basin.
Okay. We, I would identify those on the next submission too. I mean, that'll play a part in Seeker. And we'll see the EAF. They may run into issues with the bat window, but that's all part of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we can, we can handle that part. Does the town require an individual tree survey? Just for taking down, you mean?
Individual trees? Is there any significant trees there?
Yeah, that's my question.
I mean, that's what it's gonna come down to.
How big of an area are we talking about? And what are the, what are the, what's the vegetation in that area?
I don't think it's very mature vegetation, to be honest, just because of the soils and everything there. But again, it's limited, I guess. I'll take a closer look at it and maybe.
In your next submission, I just identify which areas.
Sure.
You're proposing. I'll take a look at it on the aerial, I'll take a look at the EAF, and I'll take a look at the tree clearing.
How, how close is the wetlands to the building?
It's pretty close, I think.
Yeah, it's up to the back of the building, basically.
So you may, I mean, so the tree clearing on the west side of the building is probably gonna be in the, either in the buffer or in the wetland.
And that's a wetland disturbance permit there, yeah.
And then, one, just so you're aware, the applicant for the Lacari property has submitted, which is the old Stefano's Restaurant, down, two or three parcels down.
Two parcels.
Is looking to bore under my, Middle Bush and extend the water to service that property. So, which would be, the bore would be at Camilli Drive. So I don't know if, rather than, you know.
Rather than.
A new well, you may reach out.
Who's their engineer?
Is it Chuck May? Yes, that's it.
Chuck May.
Chuck May?
Charles. I can get his info if you need it.
Okay.
Yeah, be good.
Okay, throw that in the hopper.
All right. Does anyone have anything else for him, or?
Nope.
No?
All right, so I think we.
Some work to do.
Yeah, a little bit of work.
All right.
Thanks a lot.
Yeah, all right. Have a good evening.
You too.
Okay. All right. Our next item on the agenda this evening is DeSone Court, addition of commercial use amended site plan.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Steven Burns. I represent the applicant at DeSone Court. DeSone Court is a, is an existing site with five buildings on it. It's 2.5, 5.7 acres. It's been a while since we've been here, and there's some new faces up there. So if you want me to give you a little bit of a, an idea of what's going on?
Give a brief overview of what's going on on the site.
Okay, so we've got five buildings on the site. All the five buildings are exist, all the five buildings are existing. Three of those buildings are multifamily structures. One of, they're converted houses, essentially. One is the, is a day spa, which is a single level. It was probably built as a house. And then there's a large garage in the central portion of the property that is a, a storage, a storage building. There's no, there's no water or sewer in that building. The rest of the buildings are tied into a, or actually have individual wells in each, for each building that I believe are in each one of the basements. And then we're, there is, there's an existing septic system that's, that's, that's functioning, but we are unaware of any mapping that exists on it. Because this, this property was kind of a, a mess for a while. And the new owner has taken it and renovated the buildings and cleaned up the site quite a bit and got everything back in the functioning order. You know, so there's, there's no proposal for any, for any grading, new grading or blacktop as part of the current proposal. We were trying to reuse the existing blacktop for, for our parking and our circulation through the site. The, the, the original, the layout of the asphalt is a little bit, you know, is a little bit haphazard for what, what's there. But I've been able to manage to get most of the required parking spots along with some land bank spots along a, an area next to the spa. Right here. I, I had actually laid out seven spaces to land bank and labeled it. The last version was labeled five that I submitted. But, you know, I, I, I think I man, I tried to use the, the pavement as best I could. There are some restrictions, other restrictions that aren't visible, like the front property line to the, to Route 9 is actually back in this area paving here. So we couldn't, so I, I had to not, I tried to avoid putting parking or anything in any areas where, that weren't on our property, essentially. You know, but we're, we're gonna use that pavement for circulation. The, the existing entrance and exit are proposed to remain the same with, and no changes are proposed to be made in the, in the highway right away.
Okay.
You said there's multiple wells in there? Or is?
My understanding is that there's a well in each one of the buildings. It's the way that the, the survey came, it showed, it shows it, shows a well in each one of the buildings.
Probably just a jet, jet pump?
Possibly, yes. Especially there, the swamp really is in.
Jet pumping off one, it's like, oh, well, or no?
Though they're probably all in the basement, though. They don't only put them in the basements.
Yeah. They're all, all shallow, all shallow wells, like Greenfly Swamp is right across Route 9 from here.
Yeah, probably like 30 feet deep.
Yeah.
So the water table's pretty high there.
Most likely.
Yeah. All right. So if they all have individual wells, that's not, that's not an issue. Comments? Did you reach out to the health department at all for comments?
I, I did have a conversation a while back with the health department, and essentially trying to get an approval for this system is gonna be very difficult, a very difficult task because of the, you know, because there's a lot contributing to it. There's probably, everything would have, the whole site would have to be mapped out for the sewer system, essentially, and as well as the wells and everything else to try to, try to get a letter of approval for them that I don't, I'm not sure that we're gonna be able to make the, meet the new standards. Today's standards are quite a bit more difficult than they were when this was, when this was built out.
But the change, for the change of use, though, on the, the commercial building out front, you did get, they did get a letter for that?
They did not get a letter for that. I could, I could try to, I could try to get a, a letter based on a past bedroom count versus what the, what the, what the water usage is from the, from the spa, but I, I don't even know if the, if they're gonna issue that.
Yeah. Does it believe that, I mean, at a minimum, I believe they would need that, John, if I'm wrong, but.
Yeah, it was my first time looking at it, and, and that was a comment that was made in the past. And in your response, you said during our last visit, it was decided that a letter wasn't required. That was.
That was the last planning board meeting, I believe.
Was that something that was stated by the board?
I believe that there was two items that I, that the board stated that the, it was the, the letter from the highway and the letter from the, the health department, if, my memory serves me.
So based on the change in use, you're expecting water consumption to go down and?
The, the spa really is only a husband and wife that run it. There's not, it's not a busy, a very.
And that was previously used as residential?
I believe it was an office.
Office.
Office, okay.
I mean, I, I guess that would be the only justification that if, if the previous water consumption and sewage disposal flow or wastewater flow was higher than it's expected to be now, then there probably wouldn't be a need to get anything from the health department. Is that something you can outline?
I can, I can work something up on that.
Are the cals higher, lower, or that used?
I, you know, I don't know what was there before, so that's something that they would have to demonstrate.
Office to service, yeah. Office to service slash retail, because we're talking about approving both uses. Okay.
Retail for a dry store is fairly equal water usage anyway.
Yeah.
So.
But, but the primary one would be service.
Yes.
And not just any service, the spa. Okay.
Now, I guess when you say spa, what typical services would it be?
What was I gonna, here?
I'm assuming that it's massages and stuff like that, but I am not 100% sure. I can, I can look into that.
Okay.
And see what they're doing there, but I'm.
You're not a spa guy?
No, not me.
Jim, when he opened, when the gentleman opened the spa, we made sure his change of occupant was very clear as to how we define a spa. Remember, we made it because of other issues.
Right.
What they could and could not do there.
Okay.
Is, is there a document on that, or?
It's in our code, what the definition of a spa is.
Okay.
We have to have a license. We usually take the state license plus their driver's license, just to know who's in there. And it's very specific. I'm not gonna go through it, but it's hand massage, foot massage, neck and back, but it, it covers exactly what you can do.
Okay. I'll, I'll take a look at it and see what the water usage is for it.
Right.
My only comments, I mean, most of the changes are in the, the parking area. I'm hoping that you can add some dimensional callouts to assist our, our traffic engineer in the review of that. I've, I've got them listed in my comment memo where we're looking to get those dimensional callouts. But the big ones are gonna be between the commercial building and, you know, the, the width of the drive aisle between the commercial building as it goes.
I established all the aisles at at least 26 feet. So just, and I could add to mentioning, I.
What about the one that goes to the residential building in the back of the property? And, and.
This right there?
Yeah.
That's not 26 feet?
No, but.
That, that's essentially a driveway, though.
Yeah, but we would like to know how wide it is.
Okay.
And have, make sure that your dimensional callouts are not just the width of the pavement, but you're measuring from the end of one parking spot to the other, because you've got parking spaces proposed in that drive aisle.
Okay.
Okay. Does anybody have other questions?
Yeah.
All right. The land bank, you guys are okay with the land bank?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
So I think for Seeker purposes, this is a type two, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
So.
So that's, yeah, I mean, that was concluded back two years ago when they were here.
Included back there, we.
The first review of it, yeah.
Yeah, it's been a while since this has been kicking around. All right. I mean, basically, at this point, we're just getting this thing cleaned up.
Yeah.
Get all the different, there's only a handful of items to get kind of addressed here.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't see it being too much of an issue as far as the, it's mainly parking. The, the mentioning of the parking was what I, what I read. I just glanced over Malcolm's memo a little while ago, sitting in the, sitting in the audience when I found out that it was online.
Yeah, yeah. So you just have to, yeah, dimension that out on the plan, you know, and the water consumption for the, you know, for the office building.
Yes.
For that issue. I guess to satisfy those things. I mean, other than that, that's really it, right?
I have a few other housekeeping things in my memo.
Things to be added to the plan.
Yeah. The, the lighting on site is existing non-conforming. He's showing us the locations of the lights. He's estimating the illumination from, of them based on contemporary equivalents, not the exact lights, but.
Yeah.
Something similar to it. But you should add values to your candle, foot candle contours, because they don't have any.
Okay.
Just for posterity. But they're all already up. They're, they're, they're not proposing to change the lighting plan.
Right, right, right.
And there's really, the lighting is minimal on the site.
It's very little lighting, yeah.
Okay. All right. I mean, at this point, what do you guys want to do? To resubmit it first? And are you guys satisfied with what's here and just condition everything out?
It's so close. It's close, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's really not a lot. I mean, it's, I mean, for the board itself, I mean, obviously, we've discussed all the issues, as long as they can, they can meet those items. I mean, we feel like no sense in coming back.
Unless they're gonna need to change the geometry of the proposed parking?
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna stay. I mean, it's really, there's, there's really nothing that's gonna get changed here. And they're not proposing any new work, so.
So then why don't we just do that with those conditions on it?
Right.
Yeah. And so, want to make a motion to authorize the.
Authorize the.
Planner to draft a resolution and condition all the outstanding items?
Yeah, I'll move that.
Second.
Okay. Motion's made, second. All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
I think for the record, too, you should probably make a motion to waive the public hearing.
We didn't have a public hearing for this?
No, it's all for discussion.
No, we didn't. Okay, so with that, apparently, we didn't have a public hearing. If nobody objects, I guess we waive the, we could waive the public hearing. Otherwise, we rescind the other resolution.
Yeah, this is an adjacent.
No, it's all commercial and it's pretty heavily wooded to the back.
Yeah, the, the soils in the area are tough, so the density for residential is not there.
Yeah, it's in the middle, it's in, it's.
It's a swamp.
It's flanked by, it's.
I don't have a problem waiving the public hearing.
Okay, so, somebody want to make a motion to waive the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so that's, that's it.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Have a good night.
You too. All right. Our next item on the agenda this evening is a conceptual review of U-Haul storage, U-Haul stage door load.
All right, good evening. Bill Pobell, I'm here for the applicant, U-Haul. As the board may recall, we were here last month, or actually the last meeting in January to conceptually discuss installing or constructing a new U-Haul facility after the stage door road, which also would face on Route 9. We wanted to come back for a second conceptual because of the significant comments that pertain to the building architecture, because U-Haul is really looking to get a better feel before they move forward with this site plan. So the comments we received regarding the specific site plan layout and all that, we do have those discussion items that we're going to incorporate into any site plan. But again, we wanted to come back for a second time just to discuss the building where there was some significant changes and get the board's feel on, on the direction that we've gone. The drawing on the bottom is the, is the elevation view that we brought to the last meeting. If you recall, with that elevation, the front of the building that fronts on Route 9 was three stories, the sides and the back, which would be the main access for people bringing their storage items, as well as the retail, that would all be two-story. So we're here tonight with a revised elevation, which is in the top drawing. And what we're proposing to do with this is to fill around the front so that we're lowering the profile of the building to look like a two-story building, which would be consistent with the two-story zoning requirement. So with this new plan, again, the profile of the building is much lower looking from Route 9 than the original plan. I know there was some concern about the stripes at the last meeting. Those have been removed for some architectural horizontal siding, which you can see that's been dressed up quite a bit in the front in comparison to the, the first drawing. I know there was a discussion about removing the drive-in storage. That still is a very important aspect to what U-Haul would like to do with this site, and it's important for their corporate image as far as what they present with a lot of their buildings. But what we did with this building is we decreased the size of the letters quite a bit, so it's not as big as the original drawing. And we did put them on this drawing compared to the last one. We didn't have any of the signage actually on this, but it was provided in the packet last time. We're also providing culture stone. There's this cultural stone band that's being now proposed along the, the bottom to add some architectural highlight, revise the colors so they match more in comparison to the original drawing with the dark browns. So this is where we're at now, and we're looking for any input regarding this revised design.
What do you guys think of the?
A lot better than.
Yeah, definitely better.
Yeah, okay.
Now, there'll still be display trucks and trailers in the front of that?
Correct. That, that would be over.
On the right side though, yeah.
Right in here. On the site plan, which I have here, there's five, five display areas. And I know there was a discussion regarding, you know, really upgrading or expanding the landscaping, which we planned to do. We didn't show any right up against the building just so you can see what the building would look like. We didn't want to hide it for, for this particular plan. But again, that's one of the comments that, or discussion items at the last meeting that we, we know about and will be incorporated into the site plan application.
Yeah, I think it looks, I mean, it looks a lot better.
I think it's a lot better.
The, I guess there was also with the packet was a signage, I mean, is this the only signage they're looking to do or?
Well, there would be signage in the back.
Second set here with a signage proposal.
There's the last six sheet, yeah, under signage proposal, those are the signs that are being proposed at this point.
Yeah, which shows that, shows your one and then, yeah, basically what's shown on that top picture, it shows.
This is the front.
There's no sizes in there, right? One inch was 20, so. Looks like about a 10 by. You have the back, yeah.
What's the date?
It should be represented on.
The, the sign plan that you brought today is dated December 19th, 2022. It looks like the old plan. Is there a new?
There is a back.
There in the back here?
I thought, yeah.
The date may not have been changed on those drawings, but I believe that's all been updated.
23.
I'm sorry?
It's dated 23.
This packet?
Is that the old packet?
I think I got both, yeah.
It's 2017.
Sorry about that.
No worries.
Day, a few days ago. This is where they start, pointing out.
It's good.
It is. Yeah, it's, I mean, it's still just a lot of square footage of signage. I think that you'll run into issues with the code and the need for variances from that. Just eyeballing it in terms of the number of locations. I mean, because of the geometry of the lot, you'll get a larger allowance in terms of signage because you're in a corner. I don't think that the corner extends to a lot that has frontage on three sides, does it? Or do you get?
No.
Like you just get double for a corner?
We are aware of that and that was discussed, and we know that there's a potential we may have to go for some kind of variance with that.
It, it looks like it would be a substantial variance. That's my only point. The square footage, proposed sign area, they don't have area numbers, though. They don't have square footage on them, but just eyeballing it in relation to, you know, the orange doors and stuff like that, it looks like it would, it would far exceed what would be permitted by code, so the variance percentage would be substantial.
Yeah, it looks like.
But our code is.
Square feet on the one of them.
Our code isn't based on the building size, right? It's just an absolute.
It's based on frontage, I thought, right?
It's the building though, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Up to 100.
But there is an upward cap. It doesn't, it doesn't scale infinitely.
Because we had, because Adams had to get variances.
Right.
Yeah, with a, with a 50% allowance on the second side for a corner lot. And I'm seeing probably 10 times as much.
There's a lot, I mean, there is, I mean, there is a lot of proposed signage on here, but.
It's a big building.
It is a big building, and, and there would, there would be a certain need for directional signage. I'm just letting you know ahead of time that, you know, it, it looks like there would be required variances and that the variance would not be small.
Are you going to modify the back building to match the front building? Because I see in this rendering here.
The vertical stripes and everything.
Yeah, the U-Haul has the newer and the, that's like the old drawing.
That's, that's something we can look into. We thought on the backside with stage door road being very industrial.
Okay.
You know, we.
Yeah, I, yeah, I understand what you're saying. It's kind of, it's, you know, like the rest of the building is basically warehouses back there. It doesn't need to, I mean, the really, the real focus, the real focus needs to be from Route 9.
Right.
As you're coming, you know, as you're coming into, coming into town or even going out, as long as those, those two sides, I mean, have the, the majority of it, you know, that's what we're.
So when you're on Route 9, this is what you're going to see?
Yeah.
So you actually have to go walking around on stage door road?
Before you'll see the other, before you see the other buildings.
Right.
Or the other building, I mean, the other building on the back.
Back of this building.
Yeah.
And those, as I'm sure the boards are aware, those are all warehouse type buildings. You know, a garage, some of them have garage, a lot of them, I think they all have garage doors that, in the front facing stage door, road.
We saw a conceptual for another one too, at the last planning board meeting, maybe two ago, but.
It's not gonna.
It's better looking than the other.
And what we did with this particular layout too, we did keep in mind, we tried to keep all the garage doors not facing directly on stage door road. So for the warehouse in the back, the, the loading doors are left to right.
Right.
If you're standing out on stage door.
Yes, they're not directly opening.
Right, and then the front, the front building is, it's on a diagonal to stage door. So, you know, if we put some trees in along the road, you know, buffer that view. And so we did take that into consideration when we did this layout.
Can you remind us what the extent of the wetland disturbance was proposed to be? You had to build, do a certain amount of filling in the buffer, right? And a certain amount of stormwater in the buffer as well, right?
Right. What we've done with the layout is, you know, we did keep all the parking away from the buffer so that we'd be proposing stormwater, which would be grassed or vegetated surfaces in the buffer. That would intercept any water and treat it before it would be discharged to the wetlands. There is a portion in the front, in this area here. Where we would have to fill in the buffer in order to get the size of the building that's needed for U-Haul. And we're proposing a mitigation area in the back. So that would be a replacement area for the wetlands that we would be taking out. Again, the stormwater is in the back, so that, all that water is treated before. And the buildings, especially the back building, acts as a natural buffer itself because there's no access to the back of it. So there would be no need to go behind it in the buffer and get close to the wetlands.
It only acts around the other three sides.
Right, and all the roof, all the roof runoff would be directed to the stormwater ponds as part of the stormwater management.
Would they be treated before?
So, but this, it was a little tricky with this site, you know, for the, just with the two things I discussed, with trying to keep the, you know, the overhead doors and access away from facing the road, trying to keep the disturbances less impactful to the wetland buffer, those types of things.
Anybody have any other questions around this?
No.
Looks way better.
Yeah. Okay. All right. It seems like everybody seemed to be happier with this, with the newer updated plan.
Yep.
I guess the signage, I mean, we'll have to, signage seems to be.
Cross that bridge when we get there?
Yeah, well, we have, might have to get the variance, that's.
Right. Well, again, the big thing tonight is, you know, we were hoping, we thought we were going in the right direction.
Yeah, the, the architecture is much better.
Right.
You know, and then making it look, I mean, again, it's, yeah, the front of the building, given at the landscape, I think helps a lot, you know, just bringing that up.
I think we'll, I think we'll look for a much more robust landscaping plan at site plan. I think it makes sense to leave it off of the plan now, but I think that it would make sense to, to buffer it substantially.
Yeah.
Well, we, I don't want to go to the extent that we're going to landscape this substantially because, you know, we, we do need to see the building. It is a business.
Right.
But we want to, we want to work the landscaping.
Do some lower, some lower planting.
To soften the view.
Yeah, maybe not, maybe not tall trees and things like that, but some lower.
Exactly.
Yeah, that would, I think that would work as well.
Right.
Some, you know, work with some bushes and things like that.
Mid stories.
Because as you can imagine with the.
What you wouldn't want is a tree that's going to then obstruct your sign.
Right.
But you would want to break up the first story of that building.
Basically, I want it just to be one big plain lawn going up to the front building. You can kind of break it up a little bit.
Right.
Soften it up a little bit.
Exactly. Yep.
Same thing with the perimeter. I mean, it's more important here, but, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I get the, I get the need for the signage and things like that. You're trying to, you know, you don't want to block that out because of the branding. It's more or less you're trying to, you know, have the people identify the brand and what you're trying to sell.
In this particular model, works, you know, for visibility driving on Route 9?
Yeah. Yeah. So I think, I think this is much better. I think we're in a, everything else is pretty much minor really at this point.
Okay. So we'll take these, you know, these discussion tonight and.
Take it, yeah, take it back.
Discussion at the last meeting and, and prepare an application.
Work on a, you know, this, a couple, well, obviously have a lot of work that's probably to put together with, you know, to make a full submission, because you have the, everything with the wetland disturbance permit on top of just the site plan as well.
Understood.
So, yes, get it all together and make a submission and we can go from there.
All right, great.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Well, let's warm it up. I'm Steve Waylon, Waylon Architecture, one of the architects on this project for Unshattered. I'm joined tonight by Kelly Lingard. She's the owner of Unshattered. I'm going to turn it over to her. She's going to give you a little background information on her facility.
Thank you so much for having us here tonight. I was going to start with a little show of talent to tell you guys.
If you just stand by the microphone or at least take the microphone out.
Can I bring it, show you? Or bring it with me?
Yeah, you can take the microphone with you. Yeah, that's fine, just as long as everybody can hear you.
Hi, God. Good? Okay.
Yep, all right.
So thank you for having us. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit social enterprise. We are currently located in Hopewell Junction, and we have been running in the area for nearly seven years. We employ women that are in recovery from addiction, helping them get back on their feet and thrive in recovery. But what we do is make handbags out of all upcycled materials. So I think I can trust you guys with these. This is the interior from a guy who does local restoration, restoration, that's an Aston Martin. This is a set from a Broadway show. You can pass those down if you want. This was previously the seats of Southwest Airlines planes. And this is a local company that makes vinyl for applications like hotels, restaurants, things like that. So all of that is upcycled and reclaimed. If you want to go ahead, Steve, to the next page for me. Thank you. So like I said, we employ women that are in recovery from addiction. June will be seven years for us. Let me get that back in without a lot of noise. There we go. back in without a lot of noise. There we go. Okay. Have been in Hopewell Junction that entire time. My background is as an executive with IBM. Never thought that I would leave that career until I saw a social problem and thought, I think I can use my business skills to solve that problem. So left my career to do this here in our community. Not only are we making a social impact, we're making an environmental one as well. As I showed you, everything is upcycled. A lot of that is local. So we believe we're removing a minimum of 3,000 pounds a year of fabric from the local waste stream. And then if you look at the return in terms of economics to the local community of what it means to be pulling women off of the streets, out of incarceration, out of homelessness, getting them employed, they're spending their incomes here in our community. They're becoming leaders in our community. One of our women just a few years ago was named 40 under 40 business leader for Dutchess County by the Chamber of Commerce. We've had our women speak at the White House, but they're really making a true economic contribution through our organization here. We think of over, over a million dollars of net economic impact through the work that we're doing. A quote here from Kyla McGowan, recognized by the former CDC chief of staff, who says, "I've seen many dollars wasted on recovery and prevention programs at the federal level. You all are doing it right and making a difference. The impact you have made continues to encourage me and reminds me why I set out to help others through my work in the public and private sphere." Sphere. What are we creating? So you guys probably know the Castle Building on 376 at the corner of Myers Corner's Roads and 376 that has been falling apart for a while, but we are expanding our healing-centered employment community to help women get back on their feet and thrive. But we see this as more than just an opportunity for our women. It's really an invitation, as we expand our work, to invite the community around us to become part of a space that brings them towards restoration, healing, and community. So we're a social enterprise with a product, which means that we have a boutique where you can walk in, you can interact with the raw materials, you can look in the eyes of the person whose life you're changing, and you can purchase an amazing product. We think that's a really unique experience. People love being with us. One of the odd things now is that we have a very tiny boutique and people just hang out with us because they come in and they say, oh, something just feels good here. So we all just like, well, we finally put a chair in our boutique because it was like, well, help yourself while the rest of us go back to work. So looking to expand our offering to allow more people to just experience that moment, to take a deep breath, to be part of a safe environment, and to reconsider the way that they can show up in community. So we are working with a couple key partners. First and foremost, Waylon Architecture is helping us through our Phase Zero design here. Mass Design out of Poughkeepsie, which is a justice-centered global architecture firm, really centering the voice of the people who are being served by the architecture. And Grace Farms Design for Freedom. I don't know if you guys know Grace Farms over in Connecticut. They are a nonprofit and they have an arm of their organization that does moving the construction industry away from forced labor and human trafficking. So just last week, we signed a contract with them, and I'll read you that language, that says, "By joining Design for Freedom, Unshattered will help accelerate this movement by raising awareness of this pressing humanitarian issue, becoming the first adaptive reuse project in North America to be a Design for Freedom pilot project, and further establishing Wappingers Falls as a place of architectural significance and design leadership nationally by applying those principles as we look at how do we source materials, who are we using as our partners, where can we reuse things that are coming out of the building and put them in as part of our design elements as well." I showed you Southwest Airlines as one of our partners of materials. They are also financially invested in the building, so they're donating to help us do renovations. And they're sending a team of 20 of their employees at the end of April to help us pack and move and get ready to be in the new space. So, sorry, go back one, real quick. Some funding and knowledge partners, the Cohen Foundation is invested, the Dyson Foundation, community foundations in the Hudson Valley, Maris is a partner of ours, the Stand Together Foundation, and more. So we have a lot of great partners in our work and traction behind what we're trying to do. So for this project, we know that over the next 12 to 18 months, we expect to spend a lot of time in this room as we look at renovating that building into something beautiful, using the building itself to move people towards community and healing. But we found out late in the game that our lease in our current space will not be renewed, which means we need to be hopefully in that building by the end of April. It is not attractive at the moment. I'm sure you know that. And so what we're here asking to do is to show you what we would like to do just sort of temporarily to get us through the next 12 to 18 months to make it as pretty as it can be. And then we're going to tear all that up and do a major reconstruction plan to make that building something amazing. So Phase Zero is our move-in phase, hopefully by the end of April. What changes can we make to keep it compliant but make it beautiful and invitational both to our team and the community around us, and expensive but aesthetically pleasing, functional and safe and temporary? Because as a nonprofit, we don't want to spend a ton of money on things that we know aren't going to be there for the long run. Then our Phase One renovation, hopefully complete in 2025, we'll be back here a lot discussing that with you, which would be a full renovation of the front 10,000 square feet of that building. And then hopefully, someday, we know that our model is working. And so we'd like to expand that to do a cafe or a coffee shop. We serve a lot of women who have young kids and to be able to have potentially an onsite daycare. So those conversations are way out in the future. As you know, that building is large. So right now, we're just focused on the front half of the building. So a couple of things we'd like to do just temporarily to get us in there and make it look a whole lot better than it does. Plant some shrubs and trees. They can be in pots for now if we need to move them later, if that's necessary. We'd love to be able to put up an awning on the front of the building. There are some gargoyle light posts with some red lit eyes that aren't really brand-aligned that we'd love to take down. Put up an awning and a sign on the front door. All of that would be just temporary to get us through the next 12 to 18 months while we work on the overall design of the building, shailing the parking lot, replacing the front doors, and then making it as pretty as it can be, just to hold us over and show the community that something amazing is happening. We also are going to renovate that front room. I don't know if any of you have been in there, but making our boutique in that front beautiful space so that the community has an invitation to come in and shop the amazing products. What's great about that building is they get to actually see production happening right there, see the artisans doing their work. And then all we're going to do on the inside for now is clean it up and paint the walls. In the future, we hope to put quite a few windows in that building, really open it up, make it beautiful. But for now, we're going to live with what we have and make it functional. All right. So the questions that we have are, number one, the use of the building, being able to have retail and artisanal workshop in that space. Getting hopefully a thumbs up on doing some temporary beautification of the front approach of the building, some shrubbery and awning, all things temporary. And we'd love to be able to replace the sign that's existing right now that's falling apart and put up our own branded sign in front. I know that we need to do a permit for that. So that's what we would love your feedback on.
Okay. All right. So with, in regards to the sign, Barbara, that, what's, what's still, that's the same sizes that are allowed like as on Route 9 or?
So.
Is it?
This is temporary. So a temporary sign, are you going to do a banner or something like that? Or you can actually buy a sign?
We have signs at our current location. I would love to just reuse it.
How big are they?
I don't know the measurements offhand, but I'm going to say.
All right, so they're not big. The building is like.
Three feet.
You could, you could hold them. They're probably less than 100 square feet.
So it's, yeah.
So the building is like three blocks into a parking lot. So you may not even be able to see those.
Yeah.
The sign is out by the road.
There is a freestanding sign.
Yeah, there's a freestanding sign by the road.
That, as long as you use that sign, it's just a change of what it is. Eventually, when you go through Phase One, you may want a fancier sign, and that's something they can approve. But if you're just changing the face, that's, I can take care of. But the signs on the building, they're what sounds like very small.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, you know, the representation is pretty thick. That's why.
Sorry.
I mean, that's.
God, I'm sorry. Probably just a banner hanging up there.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, a reasonable, I mean, if it's a temporary sign for now, it sounds like you might, you probably come back at some point in the future, I guess, with a much larger, you know, a much larger project. I mean, if there's a reasonable sign or banner up there, man, I don't know what you guys think about that. I mean, as well as the awning. I mean, the awning seems to be.
No problem.
No issue. It actually is going to make the building look a little better because right now it's just kind of like a bit, you know, massive masonry there. It doesn't have any.
Yeah, and it's the bottom, you can kind of tell in this, the bottom half of that front is sort of white. I believe there was a swimming pool that wasn't closed there at one point. And so there's, I'm not sure what kind of ceiling maybe on the bottom of the building that just, it looks terrible. It's flaking. Again, we're going to renovate and no, so I don't want to spend a ton fixing up the masonry, but if I can put an awning there, it at least makes it make sense that the bottom is a different color than the top.
To make it, to kind of, kind of block it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know. I mean, if nobody else has a problem.
I don't have a problem.
No problem at all.
All right. All right. So, I mean, that's pretty much what you're looking for. Is it, well, I guess the two things we have to approve or?
The building has been used for a gym, a nightclub.
Automotive.
A bar.
Doggy daycare.
Nail salon.
A bunch of things. So she's retail, kind of doggy daycare sold products. It's artisan. To go through the whole uses, they need to get open by make first. So they're asking the board to allow that until they can come in with a full-blown site plan.
So on the use table in the CC zone, craft and artisan studios and shops is a PP.
Principal permitted.
I did notice that neither, it overlaps, though, with, I mean, I don't think it overlaps. There is a special permit use down in manufacturing, fabricating, assembling that are not permitted in the CC zone, but if, I don't have a definition for artisan, like, there's not a follow-up definition for craft and artisan studios and shops.
And this seems more in artisan.
So then they're okay.
Well, I mean, and that's historically one of the problems we've had around code.
Is that building.
We don't distinguish between a steel fabricating plant.
Right.
Somebody who's making.
Bags.
Bags.
Trucks.
Yeah.
To treat those two uses the same.
A foundry as compared to.
Right.
A foundry is compared to, in essence, a tailor shop.
Yeah.
Makes no sense.
Yeah.
So.
I think that this would be a craft and artisan studio and shop.
Which is a principal.
So it's, so bottom, bottom line is it's, it's an allowed use.
There you go.
Okay.
It worked.
Okay, so the bottom line is, but do we have to approve the use?
It's a permitted principal use.
But it's not subject to site plan.
Right.
Okay, so there's nothing that we have to do in terms of the use.
Just wanting to have your blessing on everything.
So we're just giving them the blessing on the front of the building.
Right.
In terms of what they're proposing here tonight.
I would suggest, you mentioned this earlier, putting in, you know, minor landscaping and putting them in pots in the meantime. If you're going to come back for a more substantial renovation, I think that's a very good idea. Those things won't do well during that process. And so if you want to keep them or move them as a result of the site plan, I think that's a very good idea.
Or something could be planted, you can move them.
Yeah, but they will, they will weather better. They will, you know, they'll have a much better chance of survival if you keep them in pots for now and plant them after you come back for a site plan and renovation.
Okay. So with all that said, it seems like it's pretty straightforward for the visual aspect of the outside of the building.
Yeah.
So what was presented tonight in terms of the awning, the sign, and the landscape in the front of the building, entertain a motion if somebody wants to approve what we've been shown tonight.
Second.
Okay. Motion and second made. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries. So you're all set and start.
So are all the other businesses out of that one? Okay. Because I see signs, but I see like vehicles there.
That's probably me. That's probably me. And it's the people that are riding the four-wheelers that I have to go over and be, I'm sorry, could you please not tear up the parking lot?
And our building inspector and fire inspector's already met with Kelly and gone through, so they're working closely with them to help them get open.
Good. Okay, good.
It's a great project for the town.
Yeah.
I think we should, you know, help expedite it any way we can.
Yeah, it cleans up the, cleans up the parking lot, too.
Yeah, there's some mischief happening right now, so.
Yeah.
Get it quickly.
So I don't, I don't think that application will be coming back to us then, the previous one for Castle Cadillac.
Yeah, but, um.
Okay.
Listen, it wasn't, it was right in the first.
It's nice, nice, nice work, by the way, on this.
Really, they're beautiful.
Thank you. Back the same number that I put at the beginning.
Well, let me, blind names.
Well, come and visit us.
Okay. All right, all right, thank you. All right. Okay, so that leaves us with one more item. We have an extension for Myers Run LLC subdivision. They're seeking their first 90-day extension on final subdivision application. Okay, the extension, if it's granted, would run from April 2nd through July the 1st. I guess they're awaiting Health Department and Public Works review on the project. So.
Motion to approve that extension?
I'll second it. Okay. Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. So with that, we're at the end of the agenda. If there's nothing else to discuss this evening, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Okay.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Good.
That's the.